Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Village of Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board for this Wednesday, December 21, 2016. Joanne, can we roll call, please?
Bow.
Here.
McFarland.
Here.
Nortentoff.
Here.
Cap.
Here.
Maydeck. And Dula.
Present, we do have a quorum. If everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is an opportunity for public comment. This is an opportunity from anyone from the general public that cares to ask a question or make a comment about something that is not on the agenda this evening. May we close the floor to that public? Could you, excuse me, sir, the meeting's recorded, could you use the microphone?
Yes, is this working?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I got the flyer through somebody that lived at Spiny Run. Currently, I am the president, acting president, for Spiny Run Association.
Okay. So is this comment about the Gurnee Manor project?
Yes, yes.
Okay, we'll open the floor to the public at that time for that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, the, oh, it's not a public hearing, is it? It's not a public hearing, is it?
Yeah, they're probably going to talk about it.
Opportunity for public comment, though.
Yeah.
I usually do it anyway, okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from the meetings that were held on October 24th, November 16th, and December 7th. Is there any questions or comments about any of those? Yes, Mr. Nortentoff?
Yes, on the October 24th, just one point on here, it has a record showing that I was absent at that meeting and I wasn't.
Oh, that's right, you did, you did come in. I do remember that. Any changes, any other changes to October 24th? If not, a motion to approve would be in order?
Move to approve as amended.
As amended, seconded by?
Seconded.
Second, was it you, Dick?
Yep.
Okay, seconded by Mr. McFarland, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Any, any comments on either of the other two minutes?
Move to approve.
Both of them or one of them?
Both of them.
Both of them, okay. Motion to approve, to second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nortentoff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a minor sign exception for Walmart at 6590 Grand Avenue. Is this yours, Claire?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Walmart is seeking a minor sign exception to allow one additional 67-square-foot wall sign identifying the customer pickup area for online grocery orders. Although signs for this business are governed by a special use permit, the underlying sign ordinance allows an increase to the number of wall signs allowed by right via the minor sign exception process. The applicant's sign contractor was invited to this meeting to provide additional information or answer any questions the board may have.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions or comments about the request?
Seems pretty straightforward.
It seems pretty reasonable to me, too. The schematic, it looks, you know, well-executed and consistent with what we've seen out there.
I agree.
Excuse me?
I'm here representing my audience, so I can say questions about it.
Okay, great, thank you. But I don't think we have any questions, so if anybody has, is ready to advance a motion. Dave?
Yes, I move that we approve the minor exception as submitted.
Okay, we have a motion. Seconded, and just to clarify, I brought in one, it is minor, so we are approving, it's not a recommendation, as Mr. Nortentoff stated in his motion. Joanne, can we roll call, please?
Bow.
Yes.
McFarland.
Aye.
Nortentoff.
Aye.
Cap.
Aye.
It is, okay, okay. Oh, aye, I'm sorry. Motion carries, so as I indicated, we do have final authority on minor signs, so the next step is just your building permit process. Great, thank you very much for coming.
Thanks. You did a fine job.
At least it wasn't brutally cold or bad snow.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a final subdivision plat for North States Bank subdivision
at 5555 Nations Drive.
Yeah, North States Bank is seeking to subdivide Lot 1 in the existing Auto Nation subdivision, which is generally bounded by Dilly's Road to the east and Nations Drive to the west. Staff has reviewed the proposed subdivision plat and has found it in conformance with the Village of Gurnee subdivision ordinance.
Any questions or comments?
I'm wondering what the driver is, it's not important, but never mind. It's your role.
He's asking why the request, I'm assuming that they have two tenants or?
There's a potential purchaser for the north of the two lots.
Yeah, so I thought.
They're only looking for an acre and a half, and the lot was a three-acre lot.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve that change?
It's a recommendation to the village board, right?
Excuse me.
Yeah, it's a recommendation to the village board.
I will make a motion that we forward a favorable recommendation for the subdivision of Lot 1 as presented to us.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Edwin. Any questions or comments? Joanne, can we roll call, please?
Bow.
Yes.
McFarland.
Aye.
Nortentoff.
Aye.
Cap.
Aye.
And Dula.
Aye, motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for a special use permit at Gurnee Manor, or for Gurnee Manor, located at, proposed to be located at 5631 Manchester Drive. Claire, are you on our student?
Yes.
Okay.
Rob Max LLC by Gabriel Brashatsky is seeking a special use permit to allow an eight-bedroom residential care facility at 5631 Manchester Drive. The proposed facility would provide 24-hour personal supportive and intermittent health-related services for a maximum of 10 seniors over 55 years of age. The subject property is zoned C2, Community Commercial District, and a residential care facility requires a special use permit. 5631 Manchester Drive is currently being used as a daycare center, a permitted use in the C2 district, but at the time it was established, it also required a special use permit. The petitioner is in attendance to present their plans and answer any questions the board may have.
Great, thank you. All right, as this item is a public hearing, I would request that anyone from the petitioner or members of the general public who intend to give testimony or ask questions to please stand and be sworn in by the village attorney.
Again, if you think you may provide a comment, please rise and raise your hand. Do you swear, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You may be seated.
Great, thank you. Okay, at this point in time, I'll turn the floor over to the petitioner, and you can use the handheld mic if that's easier.
Thank you. My name is Henry Tonigan, I'm an attorney, representing Irina.
You need to use the microphone.
Usually, my voice carries.
Never usually have a problem carrying, but maybe it helps with the audio.
We often hear you fine, but the, sometimes the microphones hooked up to the video system aren't as acute.
Thank you. Again, my name is Henry Tonigan, I'm an attorney at law from North Barrington, Illinois, lifelong resident attorney here in Lake County. With me tonight, I have my three clients, and I'd like to introduce them to you. First of all, Irina and Gabriel Brashatsky, and Leon Dekov. And they're present, I also have present our land use planner, Glenn Christensen from Manhard Engineering, who's done some of the drawings and submissions here. I want to thank, first of all, the commissioners and staff for being here this evening. I'm going to keep my comments relatively brief and be happy to answer any questions. This is a proposal for a special use for a residential care facility, for interim care. It is provided for, there's a licensing provision for this facility through the state of Illinois, and we believe that we'll be able to obtain that license through, because of the experience of Irina Brashatsky, and she would be the managing partner there at that facility. I've spelled out in detail sort of the nature of the facility. Couple of things I wanted to point out to you regarding the facility. First of all, it is zoned C2, there's adjacent C2 uses to the east and west of the subject property, there's a shopping center to the east of the property, there is a vacant lot immediately to the west that I believe is owned by the dentist, who has her office farther west. To the, to the north of the subject property is Cambridge of Heather Ridge, and the property is approximately three acres, and the existing building is about 4,500 square feet. The property was, was used, the building was 4,500 square feet, I should say.
Right, three-quarters of that.
I might have misspoke, I'm sorry. The, the project is for a limited population of, for seniors over 55 who need care for day-to-day functions. It is, the license that we submitted to you for consideration does not permit the care of Alzheimer's or dementia patients, and so these are people that are, and the market is designed for people that just need some care and love and attention throughout the day. It'll be provided 24-hour care, it'll be a secure facility, it's a lockdown so that people can't get in unless they're permitted in, and access will be limited going out also, so that the eight to 10 residents in the facility would have to get permission to leave the facility. The, the present facility lends itself to the rehabilitation for eight rooms with a maximum of 10 persons in that residence. As was indicated, this used to be a daycare, a preschool facility, which went out of business, and the bank that owned the prop, that had the mortgage on the property took over the property a couple of years ago. It was on the market for six months, and there weren't many buyers, and so there is an interim use right now by a childcare facility, also permitted, I guess, within the prior special use or similar to the prior special use, but that is on a month-to-month tenancy, and they don't have the ability to purchase the property. Mr. Brashatsky intends to spend a significant, and his group are planning on spending a significant amount of money for the rebuild, rehabilitation and building of this facility, over $400,000. We intend to comply with all the building codes and specifications of the village, including sprinkling, providing a sprinkling system of the property, which is, which is not really fully sprinkled at this time. The, I would just indicate that the nature of the facility is going to be, have less traffic than currently with the in and out of pickups and drop-offs. Residents will not be permitted to own a car there. The staff, the maximum staff level we'd have at any time would be three to, three to four, so that there's not a high demand for parking on the site. We intend to use the existing parking, although the current location of the handicap spots is really below grade in front of here, and so we're going to move the handicap spots up to the side of the property here, as indicated on the plot plan, so it, and that has a relatively level grade so that it complies with ADA requirements. The, there, in terms of the existing parking facility there, it's going to be patched, repaved, and restriped in accordance with the submissions. The property is, the plans have provide for further landscaping, there's going to be some patios installed immediately adjacent to the building, and also provide for appropriate access and egress if, in case there's any fire. The, there's an existing steel old cyclone fence, probably from North Chicago, back when cyclone fence used to be there in North Chicago, and that, that is intended to be replaced with a wooden fence, as shown on Mr. Christensen's design that he submitted. The, some additional trees and landscaping is going to be installed. There's two beautiful oaks on the property, one at the front northwest corner of the property, which is going to be there, and, which will remain, and there's, will not be affected by the use, and there's one immediately east of the building, and that would not be touched at all. There's some perimeter trees around the property, we don't intend to remove any vegetation along the perimeter of the property. The, as indicated, it's a zone C2, and this is a permitted special use, and we believe that we're, the submission meets the factors for granting of the special use here. The, we believe it's a complementary use to the surrounding uses. In fact, when you look at the density and the size of the building, the nature of the building, it's really not very commercial in nature, it's more residential than commercial. And we believe that it would, it would be an excellent fit for the neighborhood. The, I think it provides a valuable service to the community for seniors in sort of that niche market. It's not a full-service medical facility, and it still provides care for people, for those seniors that need personal care and monitoring medications and the like. The, we did, we do believe we conform to all the applicable requirements and regulations of the village in terms of the lighting that was submitted. On, in your packet, there's the landscape plan, and, and if you have any questions about the landscape plan or the nature of the landscape plan, Mr. Christensen would be happy to explain that. If you want a presentation by Mr. Christensen regarding the landscape plan, I'd be happy to do that. Welcome our good neighbors from Spiny Run to come up and take a look at it, and if they have any questions, certainly regarding either landscape plan or the lighting plan. Important aspect of the lighting plan is that we're not really adding any lighting, and we are providing actually superior lighting in that the, the front lightings are both focused down from a relatively low height of 10 and 15 feet in this, and with LED lighting. There was inquiry by the staff regarding the nature of the sign on the property. The current sign is a bright white sign with the name of the establishment, Patty Cakes, on it, and I believe it's not in conformance with current standards for, for signs in terms of the size and the amount of light that it projects. Mr. Christensen did provide a submission indicating how the, that sign lighting would be reduced from the bright white entire to just the letters of Gurnee Manor there, and we believe that is in conformance with the signed ordinance, and it has much less, I'll give you that there, I'm not sure if you saw that. I think I've hit the high parts of what I have, and I don't want to belabor, belabor the presentation. At this time, I'd welcome any questions either by the board members, staff, or our guests here tonight.
First, let me thank you for your presentation, and just for those that are, are new to attending these meetings, typically what we do now is the members of the board will ask questions, then after we've done our first round of questions, I'll open the floor up to the public, hear the questions from members of the public, then we'll close the floor to the public, address those questions, second round of questions by members of the board, and then we'll, we'll take the process wherever it leads us. So, so as I understand so far, the actual footprint of the building is remaining unchanged, all the rehabilitation to the building is going to be interior to the site. Outside, there's going to be some significant landscape enhancements. The, the nature of the facility itself, in looking at the floor plan, I'm not seeing any provision for microwaves or refrigerators in the room, is this?
No.
Excuse me, the, the, yeah, so if, if whoever's going to be doing the talking could use the handheld microphone and just, yes, state who you are for the record.
Sure, I'll let Mr. Brashatsky answer that question.
So I'm sensing that, so I'm sensing this is care that is beyond what would be considered assisted living?
No, it's going to be assisted living care. What do you mean by beyond? I don't quite follow the, yeah.
Well, typically, in an assisted living environment, I think I hear things like microwaves and refrigerators and things.
No, it's not going to be in the room.
Okay.
There's going to be a dining area with a full kitchen, where everything will be prepared for the residents. The residents will not prepare their meals or use any microwave or any gas devices. No, everything will be prepared for them.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead, Dick.
The difference typically is that assisted living involves some assistance with daily living requirements, and I didn't see that in the proposal, so these are people who are primarily independent and may need assistance managing meds and meal preparation.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so will there be, I see you have an RN station and an RN on board, will you also have nursing assistants or other levels of care there?
No, these are people that do not need nursing assistance, this is not a nursing home. RN is there.
These are independent people that can't drive and just need some help with food and medication.
Right, for daily, daily chores, and RN is required to dispense the medicine.
Get the license.
And the medicine will be locked, you know, and so that's.
Got it.
What the RN is for.
Thank you.
No more questions for me, sir, I'm ready.
Okay, thank you. Dave?
Thanks, yeah, yeah. One of my questions was answered, and that was to differentiate whether this was assisted living or a nursing home, so that's been answered, thank you. Mike, my other question relates to the occupancy, I, I see eight bedrooms, I see eight bedrooms with single beds in them, yet your occupancy says it could be up to 10. Can you clarify how you can accommodate 10 when you don't show that on the blueprint?
Yes, there are residents that, should I say, fear to be, they're, you know, in a bedroom by themselves, so there are two bedrooms that are going to, going to be bigger, larger than the six, so we can share, there'll be a shared bedroom. So the two bedrooms might or might not have two residents in it, in them, because, you know, there are instances that elder people do not want to be in a room by themselves, they rather share the room, so that's, we designed two rooms to be bigger to accommodate that concern.
Okay, great, thank you.
Are these likely to be couples?
Could be couples, could be friends, or, you know, I mean, you never know.
Whatever, okay.
My, my only concern, I mean, everything was really great, it was presented really well, my only concern would be the parking. You have, what's the most people on staff at one time?
The most people on staff, there's two caregivers and a manager, there's actually four people during the day, morning shift, two caretakers in the afternoon, and one overnight, so there won't be more than five, I, you know, five people there.
At one time?
At one time, yes.
Most of the time, I would assume that it would probably be okay, but like on occasions like Mother's Day or Father's Day or?
Well, Mother's Day or Father's Day, we might get a valet service and ask the shopping center below to use their spaces in the back if it's a weekend, you know.
Has that already been?
You know, I think for those special occasions that, Glenn Christensen, Manhard Consulting, sorry. You have more than adequate parking here, you know, from a land use standpoint, this is probably one of the lowest impact developments you could have as far as traffic generation and that. Mentioned the maximum number of staff at any time would be four, you might have an occasional visitor, maybe a visiting doctor, another nurse, or something like that. For the, you know, the special holidays and that, I think that may be a situation here where people will be picked up for those days, if not, there is plenty of street parking out here for the, for that.
Oh, there is?
Two or three days a year or so.
Okay, so it's, there's no, there is parking along that street?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'll take care of it. All right.
Ryan, did you have any questions? At this time, I'll open the floor to the public, so if you could please come to the microphone in the middle of the room there, state your name and address for the record, and, thank you.
Frank Karach, president of Spiny Run.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions. One of them is, I haven't seen a plot plan, but can we get a miniature copy of the plot plan to just see what, how the layout shakes out? A copy of that to give to our residents?
This is an extra one that you can take.
Oh, okay. I'll pick it up. The other question I had is where are we actually in the process now, is just the, clue me in here, I'm not familiar with the process. Is, after zoning, when is construction going to start? Is there a schedule that, a rough schedule at least with a timeline of what is going to happen when?
Let me address the, the village process first. This is, this is the first public, first and only public hearing, unless it's continued, where the, the project is presented to the general public. We are a recommending body to the village board. After we hear all the testimony and, and consider the testimony, we will make a recommendation to the village board whether to approve or, or not approve the particular, this particular project. The village board then deliberates, and they reviews, they review all the testimony, and they review what we've talked about, and they make a considered opinion in terms of, you know, whether or not the project is a go. Then, then after that happens, assuming that it is a go, then they have to go through all the, the, the building permit process in terms of, you know, review the final plans and everything. Dave, do you want to talk about that at all?
So the zoning approval, that would be approved by the, the village board, there's a, that starts a clock, they have one year from that point to apply for a building permit. We'll review the, the plans for the building permit, once they come into conformance with our building codes, we'll issue the building permit, and then from that point, they have six months to start construction. So that's the, the maximum length of time that they could start construction, would be a year and a half out, most likely, it will happen much quicker than that, that would be up to the applicant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
would be up to the applicant.
If somehow the owner would like to change it from assisted living to some other healthcare facility, would that have to be approved, or is, is the actual zoning or the approval process broad? Is it only for assisted living, 55 and older?
Yeah, I'm going to let Brian do the technicality on this one.
I mean, generally, the, the special use is limited to the request, and so, you know, they could not, unless it's permitted by right, you know, we, we'd have to evaluate what the new use would be. So you'd have to look at the zoning code to see whether it was a permitted use, whether it's another special use, but you'd have to evaluate what that uses.
Some concerns that I've had from, from our folks living over there at Spinning Run is, down the road, if this somehow doesn't pan out financially or whatever, could that be turned into a rehabilit, drug, rehabilitation center, and, and it still falls in within the zoning and?
Right, the underlying zoning will not change, so then you'd have to consider whether the new proposed use, whether that's permitted, or whether it's another special use process. But, and I can tell you that, in some instances, depending on the, you, you've mentioned drug rehabilitation, that is generally a separate special use under our new zoning code.
Yeah, okay. Okay, basically, what's, you answered a question, I'm tired of mine on my new plot plan, to kind of see what the layout is, because some of our units actually, you know, kind of go right up to the edge of the last line there, so.
I, I, I want to be really careful that we don't all of a sudden end up into a very distinct dialogue, I mean, okay, okay.
All right.
Do you want me to wait, or?
Well, I, I prefer to get all your questions, and then close the floor to the public and address them. No, that's okay, Glenn. Okay. Okay, so, so Glenn, do you understand what the last question was?
Yeah, I think is, the question involved the rear of the, of the property. I think overall on this is that, you know, the building's really not going to change, and I think most people that, when they drive by, will not be able to tell that it has gone through a change, outside of the fact that the, the property is going to be upgraded, it's going to get a little TLC. As far as the existing landscaping, we're providing a lot of landscaping in the front that wasn't there. In the rear, you can look out, look out your window, and the only change you'll see is probably there'll be some garden areas in the grass, out, in a little bit of a patio area back there with another additional tree, and that's the, really, the impact that you're going to have from this project.
Okay, thank you, Glenn. Okay, at this time, I'm a, yes, ma'am, okay.
If the people that were going to be doing this, do you presently have other locations that you're running? No? Okay, and then?
We only have one experience in the business.
Okay, but not having a.
No, 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 I'm not.
And then you are buying the property, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the floor to the public. Any additional questions or comments from members of the planning and zoning board?
I could share a comment to maybe address the issue you were talking about in terms of a change. One of the factors that would kick in, in addition to the zoning ordinances from the village, is that almost any upgrade from assisted living would fall into some requirement at the state level in terms of licensing, and so that becomes a very rigorous process with the state of Illinois, as, as relates to care for adults or children. So while the underlying zoning may not be a factor, they would have some big hurdles to cover in terms of the care provided, the staffing levels, and the types of care that they would provide. And frankly, looking at the facility, having been in some of those businesses, it would be a big lift. So probably it can happen, but you never want to say never.
Huh? Okay. All right. Okay.
Just trying to help out.
I, I know there are licensing issues, I, I don't know where the boundaries are.
Well, I'm just trying to make him feel better.
I, I, I know.
I do know where the boundaries are, but go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. Any other questions or comments? Is anyone willing to advance a motion?
David.
Dave, I'm sorry. Yes, I move that we forward a favorable recommendation for the special use permit for Gurnee Manor, 5631 Manchester Drive, being that it appears to, to meet the standards for special use permits as submitted and testified tonight. Okay, do we have a second?
A second?
Second, Mr. McFarlane got in there first. Any questions or comments on the motion? Roll call, please.
Bob?
Yes.
McFarlane?
Yes.
Nortonthoff?
Aye.
Cap?
Aye.
Enzo?
Aye, motion carries. As I indicated before, we are a recommending body to the village board, you can keep in touch with Clara or any other member of staff to find out when this might appear on the village board agenda. Next item on our agenda is a potential for a meeting on January 4th. Are we going to have a meeting? Do we know?
We're, we have a minor sign.
We have a minor sign, okay, okay. All right, um, there being nothing else, I hope everybody has a wonderful holiday season, and we'll see you next year. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move by Mr. Nortonthoff, second by?
Second.
Mr. May, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.